Good afternoon and welcome to our student-led interview with Laura Conway, who is running for the Wayzetta School Board. My name is Akitha Kumar and I'm here today with our student interviewers, Kugar, Alicia, and Ashkam. Together, we're a part of Wayzetta School Board Spotlight, a student initiative created to improve voter turnout, strike the community education about the upcoming Wayzetta School Board election, and advocate for student representation on the school board. Here's how today's interview will work. Each student interviewer will ask a set of pre-written questions. The candidate will respond, and then the students will have a chance to engage in a short discussion. To keep things moving, each question, candidate response, and discussion will be limited to about three to five minutes total. I'll be keeping track of time, and I'll hold up a sign when there's one minute remaining. If we go over, I will step in and cut off the discussion so you can cover everything on our agenda. At the end, we'll close out with questions submitted live by the community via Instagram and Facebook. Our goal is to create a conversation where the students and the community can learn more about each candidate in a fair and engaging way. Thank you, Laura Conway, for joining us today, and let's begin. So Student One will begin with our first set of questions on visions and priorities.
Hello, like I said, my name's Kugar, and I wanted to ask you, what inspired you to run for the Wayzetta School Board? And what perspective do you hope to add on to the district's decision-making?
So what inspired me to run for the Wayzetta School Board is first and foremost being a mom and the experience that I've had as a mom in Wayzetta schools. My son really struggled when he was in kindergarten, and his teacher was intricate in his foundation of just health, happiness, and success, not just academic excellence. And that experience, as well as my background as an attorney and a nonprofit leader, I feel like makes me a good candidate for the Wayzetta Board. The second part of the question was, what do I think I would bring to the board? I feel like first and foremost, I come with a fresh set of eyes and ears. I have younger kids and I have a lot to learn still about this district, but I feel like that open mind makes me more of a receptive advocate, which I've been my whole life, actually, as a city prosecutor and then as an animal rescuer for years. So, yeah, that's amazing.
Do you guys have anything else to add to that? Or maybe speak a little bit about how your teachers have impacted your high school career so far?
I mean, I would like to add, I guess, in terms of teachers in real life, one of my teachers that I would say is kind of monumental since my life was my AP Biology teacher. So she's, I mean, like when you would, when, even if you're not interested in biology per se, she still makes it engaging because you see her passion through like what she's teaching, and she gets really excited about it, so everyone listens. And it's a, I kind of noticed it because everyone else is sitting in the back. Everyone else is watching as well, like in some other classes, sometimes they'll be on their phones, but this teacher especially, like she's, she keeps everyone engaged. And even if she calls it out, it doesn't sound like you notice really, other people notice, because she doesn't really pause on the content. And that's kind of a cool thing about her a lot, so. Can I help you if you want to have any comments?
I have a, like an English teacher, like I struggled in eighth grade. I didn't really have good like grades, I guess, in English, and I feel like she did make an impact on me because she took like the time out of her day to help me. Like after school, I'm like that, it seemed like obviously better, which I liked a lot. So yeah, at some point I liked it.
Yeah, I feel like you can really tell they care. Did you have similar experience that you wanted to share, what a teacher you've had?
Yeah, I actually have this teacher right now, who's my AP Macrow理科 teacher. Yeah, he's like really nice. If I have any questions, he's like nonchalant answer, and he's like really caring.
Yeah, that's great. What's really special is my youngest daughter now just started catering with that same teacher. So it was really fun. She's amazing, yeah. It's just made my year that she got her at Meadow Ridge.
So, yeah, I went to Meadow Ridge too, to do fantastic like those teachers. Thank you so much, each and every student. That's kind of what the district motto is.
I have three there, so. Yeah, fourth, second, and kindergarten. So, yeah.
Great, I think we can transition into our second question in this section.
So kind of rolling on with what you're ready to do, the school board. In fact, what are your top priorities for the district?
So my top priority is first and foremost, is we a safe and supportive school for the students. And when I say safe and supportive, I don't just mean with the height of everything going on, physically safe. I also mean emotionally safe, you know, able to have the support team, not just in teachers, but counselors for mental health services. Secondly, when we talk about teachers, I think it's a priority to make sure that the teachers have what they need in the classroom as far as resources, so that all students can achieve that academic success. And finally, the last thing that I think is super important is listening to the community and not only listening and providing multiple different opportunities for the community to be heard and making an intentional effort to give them that opportunity, but also using that input in making decisions and not thinking that we all know all the answers already, if that makes sense. One thing I've heard a lot about is, for example, the change in the middle school schedule. I think a lot of families and parents and even teachers have been impacted by that and has the board, you know, made a concerted effort to talk to those people about stuff like that and how it's impacting their daily lives, basically.
Yeah, have you guys heard anything about the middle school schedule or experienced that?
From my knowledge, if I'm not mistaken, they have like blocks, half blocks.
It's block scheduling now, and it's, they get out at like four ten, I think it is, so it's pretty late. And then the sports are later, and so, you know, for everybody, it's just a little harder.
Yeah.
Right now is what I've heard.
My opinion would be like, I would put a super date, they have like some reasons as to why they did it, especially in terms of, you know, budgeting concerns, probably forty years ago.
Yeah.
And everything like that, as well as, you know, like, if you have, especially with bus times, especially since the middle schoolers now are getting pretty big in terms of how many people there are, the bus times as well, they also have to treat it. So I feel like that, that later time hopefully will help with that as well, if that is a issue. Because I know you guys are more recent than me.
In the middle schools, they're building a new middle school, is that correct? Because it's so crowded at the ones that we currently have. So I don't know if any of that will change also.
Yeah, they've started to discuss that at the board meetings and the work sessions. They have said that that's a potential idea, as well as, you know, adding another turret to the high school. There's, and also adding another elementary school, that was another idea that works. So they have a certain amount of land that they looked aside for a project like that, and whether or not this would happen, we're still up to making that decision. I think that would probably be good for our growing community. Yeah, we see that this year we've exceeded over thirteen thousand students in our school district for the first time. And I think that it really speaks to, you know, the quality of education that we have here at Wayzetta School District.
Yeah.
Especially with the, the new, I think, zoning laws that are trying to put in place in college, especially with the start laws here, I think they're also trying to make it more high-density as well.
Yeah. I see that happening all over.
Well, with that, I think we can move on to the last question in this section.
So in terms of the challenges in Wayzetta, what do you see as the biggest challenge right now, and then how would you care for it?
So I think that the biggest challenge with Wayzetta right now is probably maintaining those high standards while dealing with all of the growth and being able to provide equity to each student so that they can reach that success wherever they're coming from. When you have such an influx of so many, I think that there's not a one-size-fits-all answer for each student and family. So with all of that growth, there's a lot of different facets that I think have to happen in order to maintain those high standards. The other challenge that I'll just throw in there is the time in the country that we're at with a lot of changes with technology and things like AI. You know, and that growth amongst all of those things and safety concerns, that's just a lot of what you're saying.
I do have a bunch of things. In terms of, like right now, you said the challenges, but in the future, maybe like five to ten years from now, so basically like one of the large schools, what do you think would be the challenges that in the future?
Well, I think a lot of that has to do with the decision that our country decides to take right now with how much, just, we're at a turning point where I feel like a lot of things, like mental health need more support, children growing up with technology, their whole lives need different kinds of support. So if we don't start to match these challenges where they're at, I'm concerned where everyone will end up at with the just the rhetoric of every, of our society right now. But as for Wayzetta, I believe that they have done an amazing job in meeting a lot of these challenges and doing things like getting community support through the 2017 referendum that had a huge budgeting help for more resources to meet these challenges. So I have confidence in Wayzetta that they will be able to have in five years still one of the best school districts in the state.
Yeah, that's amazing. I mean, I completely, I hope that will be the case.
Yeah.
Does anyone have anything else to add?
Um, basically, I came to Minnesota like seven months ago or eight months ago. So I came here and we were originally gonna not move to Wayzetta, we were gonna pick a different district, but then my mom saw Wayzetta and she was like, wait, this looks like a good district. And my brother is also, he's in like the talented and gifted program, I don't know, like that seminars or something here. So they were like concerned how he's gonna do in school too, because he's gifted, right? So we saw that there was a seminar program here, so we were like, okay, this is gonna be a good fit for him and it's gonna like support him as well. So I was like, that's right. So I think that's something that like appealed about this district is that they're like helping people like from any level they're at.
Yeah, and I actually spent twelve years in Texas. I'm not sure if I said that, that's where I went to law school. I went to law school in Texas, and I was licensed there, and I was a city prosecutor in Grand Prairie, Texas, which is right outside of Dallas. And then I had my children, and I was like, I need to come back to the Wayzetta district to go to school, for my children to go to school here. So I actually made that like decision, but I am a Minnesota native, so my roots are here, and I did graduate from Mountain View, which is another public school in the area, but I did my undergraduate at the University of St. Louis. So my, my family is here, so that was another part of coming back. But I specifically chose the Wayzetta district because of the academic strength and the community that makes it so special, the people, the teachers, and the parents and the students. Like, this is amazing, it should be this. Not a lot of high schoolers are doing this on a Sunday, it's really cool.
Yeah, we try to get through new students every time, just so we can make sure we have a very, very, you know, perspectives at the table. Yeah, just kind of going back to that Texas part, I am familiar with kind of how the Texas school districts are. They are so big, even bigger than Wayzetta.
Very different.
Yeah, and just to kind of compare to that, like I see that we still get a lot of individual attention here despite being that big. And I don't know if like other school districts that are up the same or even the size are able to do that. And so, yeah, I guess I'm just kind of wondering if you have any ideas or ways that you might completely take measures to maintain that? Or, you know, allocate a budget to?
I think, I think it starts with the budget and asking at, first of all, at the federal and the state level for any, their, the state costs are not covering what they should because of inflation rates.
Right.
And so maximizing that, and my, actually, I think that I have a kind of unique perspective where I rescued twelve thousand animals in the state of Texas, and I had to raise all the money for it. And so I was an advocate and I was a fundraiser, and I had to maximize what I had to save lives. And so it's kind of similar, by the way, of using what you have and maximizing the results for, for the students to be successful. And not only just academic success, but also to be happy and well-revered and not going to vote and not be in this like go-go-go-go-go number one, you know, have an actual, be like a happy life. I think that's important too.
I would agree. I really do want to extend our conversation a little bit on that burnout piece, because I think everyone here, just by the fact that you're here, beats that. You're a highly skilled student, you seek opportunities outside of school. And so I'm curious about your experience with burnout and how you feel like the school board might be able to address that.
I guess for burnout, for burnout, one of the things I've seen with my peers and myself is that a lot of the things that we do in classes, one thing, you know, it's very difficult classes, you know, physics, C, all those APs. Another thing is that, especially since, especially since that social time is kind of limited at school, I would say. Especially over the years, because our time has gone past, and now it's becoming more and more academic-based as like the school years go on, and more and more attendance stricter, stricter attendance, which is, you know, justified on one hand. It does reduce that social time, which is, I think, is a key part of having a well-rounded Wayzetta graduate and a Wayzetta student. That's my thing, and also another thing I'd add to that is that the amount of extracurriculars that some people think sometimes, it's kind of, it's kind of off the charts. And that does also provide. I don't think so there's a limit, I mean.
I think we have limits.
Yeah, we have.
Like human ability.
But there is no limit by the school.
No. And same with APs, I know that some schools do have, it's on the amount of FBA's placement classes that a student can take. And in our high school, freshmen are kind of limited in that sense. Like you won't be able to take AP Human Geography, and then depending on your math track, maybe AP Calculus freshman years, students do do that. But apart from that, our school does a really limited pass sophomore two years in a year, and I think we see the effects on that, at least with my peers or students in my grade. Not having that limit causes a lot of people to push themselves. And I think that that might be a source of improvement or something that we could work on.
Well, and just creating like spaces and times where you're just sort of relaxing and like you said, enjoying and socializing with each other. One thing that we always did at the rescue was during busy finals week, we would take puppies to schools, and the students would just have time to just be with each other and play with the puppies and cuddle, and just having that time of peace in the midst of like a stressful time like finals, which is like a local, you know, nonprofit would love to do that, would partner with your swarm of, I mean.
And actually, we have been doing that. Oh, okay, yeah, our student council, every year for the past two or three years.
I think I saw you mention that in another conversation, actually, now that you say that.
Pause for positivity.
Yeah.
It has been a huge hit, like I think, I know so many people will go to that. I am usually too busy studying for finals. Yeah, but it would be great if there was more funding or just more efforts to kind of increase initiatives like that. Do you guys think that would be beneficial to your high school experience?
Yeah. I don't think I would actually like that as well. I know there's a recent policy, at least the high school level, that where you have to be in the cafeteria specifically for high school classes. So speaking of what, I mean cafeteria, I mean it's a good spot for at least security reasons, because we're something, it is a good spot to kind of have everyone hybrid be there. But another thing that I would like to add is that, like, there's also this brand-new A-Wing that we have that has like fully carpeted floors and like, it's a bit warmer there as well. So I could see like, at least a bit more, you know, collaborative space compared to like a cafeteria or something, especially with those high school classes.
Yeah, well, with that, I think we can move on to our second set of questions on student experience and equity.
How familiar are you with our district's current priorities, opportunities, and areas of continuing growth?
I am, I feel like I still have a lot to learn because like Wayzetta is so big, and my three children are in, at Meadow Ridge right now. So most of my focus is at an elementary level, that's what I see on a daily basis as a parent. I would love to hear about other initiatives that you have going on and learn more about it, but I think that that's an area that I need to know a lot more about. But I think that if anything like that, you know, again, listening and having open communication is where it starts, because you figure out what's needed for that extra inner family, and then you can go from there and treat each case differently.
Yeah, I would agree, because I also, I have a younger sister who's also in Meadow Ridge, also a kindergartener.
Oh, really?
Yeah. She, yeah, like struggles with like, you know, finding her things sometimes in her backpack, for example. Like she displays things, she possesses things. And what I've noticed is that the teacher does a really good job in like communicating with her parents, like what she did that day, if she found it. Like, I feel like they're very, like, take, like take care of the kid, like they help them with like for the smallest things to the biggest things. And I feel like that's something that Meadow Ridge is like good at. And I just think that if we maintain that and like, we make it possible even better, like the way we communicate to parents, that better, I feel like that'd be something we could, yeah.
I'm curious, you say at Meadow Ridge, like you said, I know the classes are smaller at Meadow Ridge than they get to be in middle school and then obviously high school. With you having gone through that, do you feel like that individualized attention that you kind of, you know, that we're talking about when you're younger fades as you get older? Or do you feel like there's enough teachers and resources for all the students that are in the class?
I think for me personally, I would say there's less individual attention at the high school level, and I think we would benefit from more and smaller class sizes. One experience I can speak to is that two years ago, at my AP European History class, there was, I think, thirty-five students to the classroom, and every single day, we wouldn't have enough chairs for the students.
Oh my gosh.
Which was crazy, and the teacher, yeah, the teacher, Mr. Podzinski, he would usually be standing and teaching, so he would let one of the students use a chair from his work, like his workstation, the like nice big comfy chair, to sit and be in one of the aisles. And that kind of just speaks to the fact that like, if we don't have enough chairs and tables for the students at some of those really popular classes, there needs to be something done to ensure that that can happen. While it was kind of funny, like the first few months and stuff, I do think it was a source of frustration eventually. And everyone in that class was so driven, like having thirty-five or thirty-seven students didn't really mean that anyone was being disruptive, I would say, I think everyone, that teacher specifically was a good handle on his class. But I do think that it could serve as problems for the future. Attending other school board meetings and work sessions in the past, a lot of the school board members feel as though our class sizes are good and that we are able to leave them at a reasonable level. But I do think there are a few that could have fewer students or just more teachers to deal with. And depending on the topic, like AP European History is incredibly complex. And when that, they've decided to combine it with world history, so that students could take two AP exams with only having taken one class. And it's a big endeavor, but people that they have to hire for that have to be incredibly knowledgeable about history. The ones that are at our school have been doing it for years on that. They take students to Europe every summer, that's an opportunity they offer, and they're so immersed with it that that is how they're able to deliver that quality education. But to kind of sum up, I do think that would matter different small class sizes at high school. Do you guys have anything else to add to that?
I would say, in terms of individual attention, it's, I don't know how to have like that through class sizes for, like AP European History, but I mean, of course, as the years go on, I've heard teachers, you know, like talking to us, like, hey, they're, they're getting more and more bigger, and they're like, we can't, we can't handle as many people now. So that's definitely I think that that's getting, definitely getting through a problem or getting through a threshold at this point.
I, I just think the teacher's input is so important too, how the teachers are feeling in the classroom. Are they feeling overwhelmed? Are they feeling like this is much for them? And then the parents also, you know, I think it all, it should be a collaborative effort, and the school board should represent the way the community is feeling about the situation.
Yeah.
Yeah, so in terms of the teacher side, that's nothing. Another thing is that I think the less and less attention is, you know, it's justified at some point. But I feel like we should probably tell students that they're getting less and less attention, because then they'll start growing their own needs or their own advocacy. Because I've noticed that, you know, as, as the years go on in my life, a lot, a lot of the teachers, they start to often not like check in as much, or like they don't give you the opportunity if they ask for the opportunity, which I think is a good valuable skill to have. But you should definitely be encouraging to grow that rather than having a sit-in back for her. And then some people like start to rest.
Great. I think we should move on to the second question in this section. We should.
How can you make sure students' voices are included in school board decisions?
So I think that what we were talking about was, I feel like open and transparent communication and having opportunities for feedback, and that could be in different ways. That doesn't mean necessarily going to a school board meeting or coming up with a council. I think those are great ideas. This also is amazing, but we could also think outside the box and have different opportunities for students to have input. And like we were just saying, it would be more of hopefully the school board taking a step towards the student to ask the question, rather than expecting the student to come get the feedback. And so making this intentional effort to develop the relationship of trust between students and the school board, so that they feel comfortable if there is a problem, coming to them and being open and honest about their experience, so that we can have the best success for all students.
Yeah. Does anyone have anything to add?
Yeah, I would agree. Yeah, I was wondering, I had a question. So in other like interviews, I think there was like a talking of like, we should have like a student representative for the school board. I was wondering if that's like, that's something you would like to think is a good idea or something that you would like not have, or you can change it.
So when you say student representative, like a, a school board member who is a student? Is that what you mean, or just having a student representative at school board meetings? On a regular basis?
I mean, it could be any of, of them, I guess, like, because we're still like probably thinking about which one. But I think we were talking about more like someone who could be like a part of the school board, but yeah.
Yeah, I think that that, I would be obviously open to that. I have not been on the board, so I don't know the exact operating procedures of the board. I think that though, having any opportunity for a student, because I think the student should be at the center of all of the decisions of the board. That's the point of why we're here, is for the school. And it's like rescuing, I mean, animals for me. The animals are the, that's what matters, and here, the students are what matters. So I think that them having a voice at the school board, I, I think that would be a good thing for everyone. We would have more of an inside view of what's actually going on in your daily lives instead of kind of having an arms-length, which is what I would imagine it is like in most situations with school board and students, with high school students. Because you guys are also busy and parents are busy, school work, everybody's so busy. But, so there has to be some sort of a potential effort or a different source of communication, whether it's social media that you guys are doing, I know there's a podcast that someone did. However that happens, having more communication and more representation of students is a good thing.
Yeah, that actually feels like a great time, because tomorrow, there's a work session meeting at five to seven PM where two of the school board members are going to be presented about the positives and negatives of having a student representative, representative of all the school board. It's going to be officially brought up at the school session at the first time, although there has been talk about it for the past few months. Same with the idea of community listening sessions, that was another idea brought up at the last school session. There, there was a lot of heated debate surrounding that, and I think that might be a similar kind of rhetoric.
What is the debate surrounding, maybe, I, I feel, I should know this, but I haven't seen y'all. Community listening sessions, I feel like most board members that I've heard talk candidates or otherwise are encouraging of community listening, so is the debate from, what is the debate over exactly?
So having been someone who attended the board meeting where that was being discussed, the debate was more so about whether we need to do that and whether we have to spend our time and resources doing that, because for a community listening session to happen, that would need another meeting where the board members would just sit down. It would mean they would have to decide whether or not that would be recorded, and if they would have to pay for that to be recorded. Another thing is that how formal it would be, how informal it would be, what are we already doing to address the community's needs, like are we already doing surveys? It was a conversation that involved all board members and also administrative professionals. There's like a strategic leadership team that supports the school board, and they also had some insight regarding that. And I think that everyone had the best intentions at that, with that debate. It was just, what is the best way to address the community's needs? Whether that would be through that like thirty-minute meeting once every two months, or whether it be as, as needed, as if like someone brings up an issue during a five-minute commentary period that they call up afterwards, or would it be better for the school board to reach out to people rather than say, hey, come to us, how can we come to that? That was another sort of rhetoric there, because with all meetings, will those people come? will those people come to those meetings?
Right.
Or how much would you have to promote that?
Right.
So it's just about utilizing time, resources, academic economics. I'll hear it to answer to that. But yeah, um.
That makes sense.
Yeah, there's a lot to consider. And with the student representative, I'm sure there will be a lot of interesting things to hear tomorrow. So. So with that, I think we can move on to the last question in Alicia's section.
Um what steps would you take to improve mental health and support well-being for students?
So the first thing I would do is advocate for full funding at, like I said, the state and federal level. I don't know the exact details of a local um charter, but having more support in that way, I know there is a debt right now. Um so addressing the resources that the teachers have in a classroom is, I think, the first part of it. But the resources for mental health um can come in other ways, like I mentioned, the puppy, uh puppies coming in. But there are, I think, other things that uh you can do within the culture to support students' mental health. Specifically, like when it comes to things like burnout, having, you know, expectations that are realistic so that you're being healthy while you're dreaming for academic excellence. Uh I think that teachers can do that already. But more resources for more um counselors and maybe having counselors that each person actually has assigned to you so that you have that door open to you all the time, or they're making regular contact with you and having regular meetings with you. Um but beyond that, I think it would be again, like hearing feedback from the students about what they think would help their mental health in today's world because I'm forty-two and I'm not a teenager today and I'm not a student. So again, I think that's why that feedback is so important from students. And again, working in partnership with parents, parents having a voice about their um their students' mental health and parents having a relationship with the school enough that they can go and and share concerns and talk to the school so that everyone is kind of working for the best um support for the mental health of the students.
Yep. Um Ashwath, do you have any ideas about how you've been supported at the high school so far with mental health resources? Or even to kind of simplify that, how often have you dealt with your counselor and received that kind of support?
Um well, if we're talking about mental health, um I would say I talked to a counselor like once or twice a year about um like school pressure and like maybe switching around classes or like talking about sex methods. And um yeah, that's basically it. I did go talk to my counselor this summer and I switched up my schedule a little bit because I was like scared for like um school and stuff and like the pressure.
Yeah. So I think that like when you say once or twice a year, that sounds pretty um that's, I don't think that's comfortably enough. I think that it would be great if there were regular monthly check-ins to help with that. Um.
Yeah. Well, I think you're great to talk to for such a just to save your time, but that would be a great conversation. We can continue on later maybe. I know there's a lot to say about mental health.
Yeah, the only other thing I was gonna say is I do think that there's probably still some stigma around mental health and students in particularly like the environment of achievement of Wayzata being able to be comfortable to say, hey, I'm struggling right now. Um and just kind of again working on the culture of whether it's with the teachers or meetings with the students or however to have students be able to come for help when they need it, you know, and be vulnerable in that way.
Yeah, so. I want to bring, but sorry. That's all right. Um let's move on to our final section on community and governance. And I think the first question does uh repeat a little bit of some stuff that you already said, but I think you could use it as an opportunity to elaborate on any of those opportunities. So.
So um I'm Ashwath, I'm a sophomore. Um and I've been in the Wayzata district since I was in first grade. And so my first question is, what personal or professional experiences prepare you to contribute to guiding our district's future?
So first of all, my personal experience is my children um have given me a passion around this that I is unmatched. My children are the most important thing in my life. I operated my entire life and left my law license in Texas to come here for them to go to school here. But my professional experience is uh being an attorney and being a city prosecutor. You learn how to weigh evidence and to fight for fairness and justice. You also are serving the people and representing the people as an advocate. And then again, as a nonprofit leader, I grew uh what was a very small nonprofit to a very large multimillion dollar rescue that has saved thousands and thousands of lives. And doing so, we had budget constraints, we had to fundraise, we, I did a lot of the hiring and volunteers. I worked with students that volunteered. There were so many different aspects of that that I think set me up to be an advocate for students and the best choice for the Wayzata school board.
I actually also did, I I was part of a nonprofit last year.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it was for like donating money to like kids in need for like education. And we raised a lot of money. I just, I don't remember how much.
That's amazing. Good for you.
I also volunteered here at the library during the summer and it gave me like a lot of experience.
I'm a volunteer now. Also, I should say, I have other, I have other things in community involvement I didn't mention. I was on the early learning school Wayzata rental board advisory board. But I also am a volunteer right now at the Wildlife Rehabilitation Hospital here and I feed little baby squirrels.
It's amazing.
Yeah. It's really cool.
No, I don't think a lot of people could say they have.
I released four little baby bunnies last week in the woods by my house that were um that were injured and that were nursed back to life and health and then be placed into the wild. So it's really fun.
Oh, I love that. I think that brings out a certain compassion.
Yeah, it does. It's and it's natural. And that's my whole life has been really of service and advocacy, starting with mission trips in high school to um you know, even when I was in law school, serving um underprivileged mothers in athletic roles too in court. So.
Yeah, it's amazing. Yeah. Well, it's really great to hear your mighty background in that nature. Um I think that that would really guide the second question in the Ashwath section.
Yeah, the second question was, um how would you keep parents, students, and staff informed and engaged in board decision?
So that's a really good question because I feel like parents today get really overwhelmed by emails. And I feel like the majority of the communication right now for the schools, parents, is by email. Um I think that we can develop stronger ways to communicate and improvements that simplify for parents specifically with technology. It drives them kind of little bananas to have like five different platforms that you go to. Like one thing that I developed for my nonprofit was having an app for my nonprofit. So having an app for Wayzata High School or Wayzata, um where it's like a one-stop shop for everything. And there's different kinds of solutions that can drive better forms of communication in today, twenty twenty-five. Whether it's text, whether it's social media, whether it's, like I said, an app. Um and I do think that they do a great job. I don't wanna, I don't wanna knock them. But it is just such a big district and there's such big decisions going on that do impact your life that you kind of find out about way later. So I think having the parents be a part of the process of what's happening about, you know, um opening new schools and redistricting lines where, you know, you're changing schools and all this stuff, having them know the why. And how you came to that sort of like conclusion to do that would really help with establishing a relationship of trust. Where again, the parent is gonna also open that communication line to the school too more. If that makes sense.
Yep.
Good.
And my third question, um if tough decisions come up where the community is divided, how would you like approach that?
So I think this is probably the area that I would shine the most as a board member, which is what I felt like really at the end drove me to make this decision to run. I feel like I have become a master problem solver through my nonprofit work and being an attorney. Um I have dealt with a lot of different kinds of people in a lot of really high-stress situations. Um and I am able to see other people's perspectives and remain calm and make objective decisions that are fair to everyone. And also, even when a decision is not gonna go that person's way, I feel like I'm good at having an open and transparent conversation and again explaining the why behind it. And in doing so, not losing the trust if I'm making a decision that they don't agree with anyway, if that makes sense. So you're kind of being the conduit of communication between parties that's sort of bouncing off. People are very divided and there's a lot of heat and um with all of these decisions recently. So I uh yeah, I think that would be a part where I would really shine.
Oh, that's beautiful. Um I would say that public resolution is definitely an important part of being a board member. Um it's really important to make sure that you listen to the community and will also make in concrete decisions to address what they're saying.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Um I think that if no one else has anything else to add, we can move on to our closing section.
Okay.
Great. So we're closing. We'll take questions directly from the community who are watching this live on Facebook, Instagram, and YouTube. Let's start with our first question. Uh we would like to actually read a little bit because it seems like we need to have those questions written down. Usually we want it written down. You bet it's in advance, but.
Okay, I can just edit it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Cut it out.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we have a few questions here. Um the first one would be, how will you highlight community voices given your experience as someone working with animals and humans alike? So this really does combine both of your experiences against.
How will I highlight community voices?
Yeah, uh as someone who has worked with a variety of perspectives before.
I think that I will highlight community voices by giving people specific platforms and intentional times to be heard and um and communicate with. I I feel like we can open the door in different events and it has to do with whatever works for that person or that situation. Um in our animal, you know, in our in our rescue, a lot of it is partnering with businesses, partnering with other leaders in the community that can also help us do that, highlight that in the right way.
Yeah. No, I think that's great. Um our second question here is, if you had to design one class of a high school, what class would that be and why?
Well, that's hard because I feel like Wayzata has every class possible. Yes. Maybe it was animal rescue because I feel like that is something that people don't know a lot about. And in Minnesota, um animal advocacy and animal rescue is not as prevalent as in the rest of the country. And it's something that I'm really passionate about. It also uh highlights the importance of nonprofits in general. And I don't know if there's a class not nonprofits, but organizations that just help people and help causes for good to make this world a better place and aren't doing it for the money or the clout. They're doing it for a good cause. Um I think that's really important.
That's beautiful. And the last question here is, how would you manage to devote enough time to the school board given that you are a mom of three and the problem you have a lot other than running your license cards?
Absolutely. So this is actually the perfect time for me to do this because in June, I did step down from my position as the director of this very, very large rescue. So right now I am just volunteering and being a mom, but I have this time to dedicate to the school board. I have, I have a situation where I can do that. And I um yeah, I I'm excited to to delve more into that.
Of course, I think that's one of the biggest concerns that a lot of people have um is that whether or not these people who are working sometimes full-time jobs are able to devote
Yeah.
the energy and the resources to.
Right. And I'm lucky that I don't, I don't have to have a job immediately. Um yeah.
Well, great. Thank you, Laura, for joining us today. And thank you to our student interviewers and all of our students and community members who tuned in live on our platforms. On behalf of the Wayzata School Board Spotlight, we appreciate your time and your willingness to engage directly with students. Our goal is to make this election as accessible and meaningful to the whole community and our conversations like this are a important part of that work. Please look forward to our future candidate interviews and fill out our pledge to engage board linked in our Instagram bio to stay connected and involved in this election. Thank you.
Thank you. Gosh, I feel like there's so much I didn't say. When you're like on the spot, it's so hard.
All right, you're just gonna end the.